Okay, we'll call the Crow Wing County Committee of the whole on July the 21st, 2020, to order at the historic courthouse. What the whole meeting is going to be dedicated to is the Federal Cares Acts Act programming. So, Tim, are you our presenter? Pardon me?
I'll start.
Okay. And just for the board members, as far as I'm concerned, this is not the, like, being at the county board meeting, this is like a, to me, any committee meeting that we have is just an open conversation, like, we're still sitting at the table around there. So, you don't have to get my permission to speak, just let's have a kind of a roundtable conversation about how we're going to address this, if that makes sense, so.
Ms. Chairman, members of the board, I gave you, first off, the qualified expenses under the Coronavirus Relief Fund, also known as the Cares Act. Crow Wing County was allocated a little over $8 million from the Federal Cares Act that went through the legislature, you may recall. And so, I thought first we would start with kind of what's the basic understanding of what qualifies? And so, in order to qualify, they say it has to be a necessary expenditure. Well, what is necessary? Actions taken to respond and mitigate the public health emergency. They can be used either directly related to the emergency, such as addressing medical or public health needs, or to respond to second-order effects. So, if you think about, we had a lot of our workers that started to work remotely. They may be performing the same function, and that's not eligible for reimbursement, but if we had expenses associated with setting them up to work remotely, that would be an eligible expense. So, we can also use it to support, to provide economic support to those who are suffering from employment or business interruptions that were due to COVID. So, that allows us to use those funds in the community, if you will, for grants. Could also use it for loans. If we used it for loans, we have to pay the money back when we get the money back, and that would seem to sort of defeat the purpose of providing a form of relief that is actually going to advance the business. Otherwise, if they just got to pay it back, then that's not really accomplishing what we would hope. Statute specifies that expenditures must be necessary. And what does that mean? Well, it is interpreted as being reasonably necessary for the response to or mitigation of COVID-19. These terms that they're using, necessary-
They're very subjective.
Very subjective, yes. And so, and as I think you know, if we use funds in a way that is after the fact determined not to be an eligible use of funds, then Crow Wing County would be liable to return those funds. And so, the fact that the guidance is squishy is not helpful to us in our deliberations. I think there are some things that are clearly going to be eligible, the one I just described to you, for setting up remote work, but there's others that I want to talk to you a little bit about that are more squishy. It has to be expenditures which are not budgeted in our 2020 budget, sort of. And by that, I mean the expenses meet the requirement if the cost cannot be lawfully funded using a line item allotment or allocation, and this is important, or the cost is for a substantially different use from any expected use of funds in a line item allotment or allocation. So, we have allocated budget to pay employee salaries. In and of itself, that is not eligible for Cares Act reimbursement. If the employee was doing something substantially different than they would regularly be doing, then it is eligible, even though you had budgeted to pay someone what they're doing if it's not the same, if it's substantially different. There again, the term substantially different, kind of a squishy term, that's what we got. And then, it has to be incurred during the covered period from March 1st to December 1st. The performance must be, must occur during the covered period. We don't have to necessarily have paid the bill by December 1st, but the expense has to have been incurred. And so, whatever we do has to be substantially complete. But we have up to 90 days after December 1st if it's just paying an invoice, something of that effect.
Can I jump in and ask a question?
Sure.
So, you know, I got your email and said, telling the board that, oh, you've got to think of, come up with the ideas of how we're going to spend this money. So, I've been racking my brain, and I guess, why, I guess the first question, and I kind of said this to Steve, is why, what if we can't fix, we don't have $8 million worth of expenses, or we don't have $8 million worth of things that we think we need to be, spend this money on? Why do we have to, why, why can't we just say, we don't need that much money? I mean, it's almost like the pressure's on, I got to spend $8 million, where am I going to spend it? And then, it just becomes stuff that we don't need, or it puts us in jeopardy of spending money that they say, no, that was not eligible. And then, all of a sudden, we have no other way to pay that back than to levy people's tax, property taxes.
We, Ms. Chairman, it's a really good question, and you don't have to.
Oh, okay.
Now, what I would tell you is, you know, think about the catastrophic impacts of COVID in our community for businesses that had to shut down.
Right.
And how much revenue collectively was lost just by those businesses? If nothing else, if you did nothing else, what's the catastrophic loss to our businesses when they're closed on Memorial Day weekend? $8 million will pale in comparison to the economic loss that we suffered. And so, you could spend the entire $8 million, and it will still be a drop in the bucket of the catastrophic impact on our economy that our businesses suffered. You don't have to, but what I am simply suggesting is that the scope of the loss is so great that $8 million can't come close to plugging it.
Right.
That's all, but you don't have to.
But being that it's so squishy and so uncertain, how do we know how, if we're going to give, I'm all in favor of grants to small businesses, but some of these big outfits, you know, the Walmarts and the Costco's, if we're, if they're asking for money, that ain't going to, ain't going to come from this guy.
I don't think anybody is proposing that. We'll go through kind of the budget of what we're talking about today, and all we're proposing is just something to start your discussion. It doesn't mean that that's got to be the end of it, of course. It's up to you guys to decide that, but I would personally advocate you should not fund large corporations. You should not fund chain stores. Even if they chose to shut down, I can give you an example of Kohl's. They chose to shut their doors. They were not ordered to shut their doors. I don't think, you know, if I were king for a day, I would not fund anything associated with that. I tend to agree with you. I think it's small businesses that were at the biggest risk of tipping over in our community.
So, is there, is there any template or, or anything of how we would give out, I guess, grants? I mean, there is a template or some-
There's, there's many examples, is what I would say. And you may recall, I had suggested that you take a look at, there was a Ramsey County model that was how they were choosing to give out. I have another one from Dakota County. And all that really is going to do is to give you some kind of a broad idea of what are the criteria they used, and then, what we need to get from you is, what do you think the criteria should be? That's what I'm hoping that this discussion today produces is, there's two layers to this. One of them is set the priorities. You need to determine where you think the highest and best use of $8 million in our community would be, or, or not. After you kind of allocate the priorities, then there becomes this logistics issue of, well, okay, you're going to set aside, let's say, $3 million for economic assistance grants. What are the criteria for people to apply for them? That logistics. And so, first priorities at a broad stroke level is what I would suggest you think about. And then, after you set those priorities, then we're going to talk about some of the specifics of, okay, well, what are the criteria you want to apply to economic assistance grants?
So, all 87 counties could be, every county board could do a different set of standards or whatever they want to do as far as giving away assistance grants, correct?
That is correct, and, you know, on the one hand, that kind of leads you to thinking, okay, well, you might hear from someone, well, Cass County did this, why didn't you? Well, and that's a downside of that. The upside of it is each county board duly elected for its jurisdiction gets to make a determination based on their own community makeup. Some are more agricultural. We're very tourist dependent. And so, the makeup of a community will probably impact the kinds of grants that you would want to give, and it will vary from county to county. So, there is an upside and there's a downside.
So, how would, you know, when, when Commissioner Brecken and, and you and myself went to that meeting of the bar restaurant owners, so how would the county board, let's say Restaurant X in Garrison came and applied, how are we going to decide based on what, how much they're going to get, or how, I, I don't know, it seems kind of vague. I mean, do they, do they come and say, okay, so for March, April, May, here's what my sales were last year, and here's what my sales were this year, and then, we give them a grant for the difference, or, or what?
You could do that. I think that's a, that's one way to do it. One of the things that the Cares Act will not allow us to do is to reimburse ourselves for lost revenues. So, if, for instance, the local option sales tax didn't produce, it is, by the way, but if it didn't produce what it had year over year, we can't reimburse ourselves for that lost revenue. It's unclear whether or not we can do that in the economic assistance grants. There's a lot of folks suggesting that, yes, we could use revenues. A safer alternative that I would suggest is, just to be on the safe side, don't focus on the revenues that they missed out on, focus on the expenses that they couldn't pay because the revenue wasn't there. They couldn't pay their insurance bill, they couldn't pay their employees, they couldn't pay their light bill. I think that's probably a safer place to be. The reality is, we also want to know what other relief did they get? I think you're going to want to know that. Did they get relief from the PPP?
Right, the Paycheck Protection Act.
Exactly, yep. And so, I think your application, how you write the application, but it ultimately is up to the business to make the case of what's the loss that they suffered. You get to decide, do you want to do different grants for every one of the businesses, do you, which I think is dicey? Do you want to do a flat amount? Do you want to do a flat amount per employee? There, I mean, it's pretty wide open what you can determine about those specifics.
And that's strictly up, what, with, your reading, is that strictly our call? Nobody's going to come back and say, hey, you can't, you couldn't do that, and then, all of a sudden, it's COVID.
They might.
Pardon me?
They might.
Yeah.
One cautionary thing to look at is, there will be an audit following this, so it could come back at that point and be denied.
It could, but, you know, as long as you can make the case that it is COVID-related, I think you're on pretty safe ground. We're going to reimburse, we can reimburse ourselves for our COVID-related expenses. And so, yes, it is going to be subject to audit, but because there is this guidance that says reasonably necessary-
Right.
-that also, I mean, it's a double-edged sword. On the one hand, someone could say, well, we don't think it is, but it also gives you great latitude to decide that it is. And I'm not clear, I've never experienced where they would come back to you and say, you have to pay something back. Even, you may recall in the Health and Human Services area, recently, we've been talking about money that the state had incorrectly reimbursed us for, and we've been having a discussion at the legislature about, well, that's, that's, that's their error, not ours. We shouldn't have to pay back for their error. And so, it's, it is unusual. We will get an audit. No audit is going to look at absolutely every single expense. It can't. They're going to do random spot checks. And so, I think it is wise for us to try to make sure that we are sure that there is a good, solid COVID-related reason, but I think you can't throw a rock without hitting a good, solid COVID-related reason in our community. The devastation that we experienced was real, significant. We probably experienced higher unemployment rates than most areas of the state because of our tourist-dependent economy. So, I think there's a lot of latitude here. The other thing that, the only other thing I'm going to say about the qualified expenses is that, that those requirements apply not just to us, but also to sub-receipients.
Right. For what, Tim? I didn't hear what you said. Apply to who?
Those requirements apply not just to us, but they apply to any sub-receipients. So, for instance, if you wanted to use BladeX to be the administrator for the economic assistance grants, at one point in time, I was hoping we might be able to grant to BladeX, and that would count for the December 1st deadline. That's not the case. BladeX has to be done by December 1st with administering the grants. They have to be out the door. I think they could be, here's the list of all the grants that we're going to issue, and the check can go out 30 days, 90 days afterwards, up to 90 days afterwards, but it has to be incurred by December 1st. They have to know. So, not just us getting the money out the door, but whoever we use as a sub-recipient. So, if we're going to do something for food and shelter, for instance, with Lutheran Social Services, whatever we grant to Lutheran Social Services, they have to have out the door by December 1st for food and shelter as well.
So, so then, they have to submit that they've spent that money?
We'll have to track it and produce the documentation necessary. All of the tracking and all of the documentation is eligible for reimbursement under the Cares Act, and so, the cost of administering the Cares Act is also eligible for reimbursement under the Cares Act.
So, which department here would be the administrator of that?
Well, we'll probably need to coordinate that through finance, but I think that we will have Community Services involved in that. They generally have the relationships, if we're talking about Health and Human Services, it would be them. If we're talking about Economic Development, I think it's going to be Finance working with whoever we decide. Either we could administer, we could administer the grants ourselves, or we can use a sub-recipient. So, that's what I wanted to cover about what's eligible. Mr. Chair, next. This is really to start the discussion about priorities, all right? Ms. Chairman, you will notice that these are very broad categories and big buckets, and, and so, I asked-
Your honest document right now that you just have-
Yes, yep. And so, when I asked you guys, start thinking about how you would like to invest Cares Act dollars in our community, I asked the same question of the SMT members, and this is really just the product of that discussion. And so, the first thing that we thought about is broadband. Broadband has the advantage of being something that outlasts our COVID expense, and so, it's an investment in, infrastructure, investment in the community. We have Kristi Westbrock on the line from CTC, and then, I also heard back from Charter Communications to talk a little bit about broadband and what that could do in our community. So, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you?
Before, before we go to that, I thought I had a conversation with you that, that this was not eligible, or it was murky on-
It is.
It is.
It is. And so, Ms. Chairman, here's how I would approach this if I were you, and I have talked to Kristi about it as well. There are broadband projects here that, that would be good projects in our community, and she'll talk to you about how that would advance our penetration of broadband in the community. We have to make the case, I believe, that it either is advancing distance learning for, for kids in schools that is related to schools doing distance learning. It has to be about telework, people that are working remotely and advancing that, or telemedicine, people who are attending medical appointments virtually. The murky part of that is, that case could probably be made for any broadband project to some extent. And so, my hope would be, these would be the kinds of projects that would help to advance that the most. The other criteria is December 1st. And so, that's the other thing you run up against in an infrastructure project is, can you get it in the ground by December 1st because it has to be completed? Well, that's also going to limit what it is you can do. The approach I would suggest you take and with the companies is, I don't know if we are in a position where we will want to assume the financial risk associated with a broadband project, that it may need to get paid back. What I would suggest then is that you entertain projects in which the company expresses a willingness to entertain the risks themselves. If you fund it, and it is later determined not to be eligible, that the company is committing to repay the funds so that we don't have to. Now, that's going to probably seriously limit the number of broadband projects that you're willing to consider, but I wanted to make sure that you have kind of a full range of options in front of you. So, I think it is murky. Okay?
Yep.
We have Kristi Westbrock from Consolidated, it's not Consolidated Telephone Company anymore, is it? It's-
Telecommunications.
Telecommunications, there you go. So, Kristi, why don't you walk us through kind of what you had, and then, I'll talk a little bit about what I heard back from Charter as well.
Perfect. I would just like to thank all of you for allowing me to discuss this broadband option with you today. Thanks to each of the commissioners and also Administrator Cool for hearing us out on this. There's a great opportunity here for us to continue to deploy broadband across Crow Wing County. There's been no time that we've ever seen such a demand for broadband services in our country, but certainly in our county. And so, just to talk through a little bit of that, I have some slides. Teresa, if you would be willing to pull up the PowerPoint. Great, you can go to the next slide. All right, first of all, telecommunications and broadband providers were asked by the Federal Communications Commission to sign on to what was called the Keep America Connected pledge. Under that pledge, we couldn't terminate any service to a small business residential customer who had an inability to pay their bill. We had to waive all and any late fees, and then, we had to open all of our Wi-Fi hotspots to any American who needed them. CTC complied with this. There was definitely a notable cost in, in complying to this, which is directly COVID-related, and I believe would easily pass an audit because it was a federal bill, and we can show that we complied to each of it. In the next slide, you'll see that opening our Wi-Fi hotspots was huge. In a matter of two weeks, we had deployed out several new hotspots into areas that we knew that kids weren't connected for distance learning. They are everywhere from Legion parking lot to the town hall, to across the communities. During this response, and still today, we have 50 Wi-Fi hotspots that have been deployed. We can go on to the next slide. We also, unlike many businesses, we figured out a way to keep going. We didn't stop putting broadband in place, but we needed to keep our technicians safe. And at the beginning of this, the numbers for Crow Wing County, as you all know, were very concerning and very grim, and so, we needed to find a safe solution. So, we developed a product called broadband in a box, and broadband in a box basically was a package that you set on the doorstep, and then, our technician would help install this through the window or out in the parking lot, talking to the customer. But again, the expense that we had in setting up a product in basically a week of time certainly comes from COVID, and we could prove that this was a COVID-related expense. In the next slide, you'll see the project that we worked closely with ISD 181 on, and I know this looks like a lot of lines and a lot of engineering, but I'll tell you what we did, and this was in a matter of about a five-day timeframe, was we took every student in Crow Wing County that didn't have access to high-speed reliable connection, we plotted them into our service territories, and we figured out, number one, they were 400 feet from our fiber, we could connect them. Number two, if they were in a dense area where we could put in a Wi-Fi hotspot so they could go to school at those areas. And the last was, if they weren't in our service area, who could they get to service them, and how could we get people onboard to help? And so, we did this comparison and got those students connected basically overnight. Keep in mind, though, there was a high cost to this because the ground was still frozen, so we had to lay a temporary drop and then had to go back now and plow that drop in. So, it was like a double expense for us in those students connected. On the next slide, I'll just show you the consumption of bandwidth. I mean, it just was, it was just uncanny. I mean, we took a 28% increase in one month, and then, our overall peak was over 19%. And just as a matter of interest, DMS, our lowest bandwidth time, and 9:00 PM is always our highest. Move on to the next slide. So, what have we completed to date? We've completed the Crow Wing County fiber drops in 2020 and the wireless access point, the community at Wi-Fi, and we have proposals that we believe that we could get done within the timeframe proposed. We don't have a lot of extra time, I, I can tell you that right now because fall does come quickly and the ground does freeze, but just to give you a high-level overview on those quickly. The next slide will show the cost associated with the Wi-Fi, and it was $9,828 in hardware and labor expense. I just want to note that Senator Tina Smith's office was, had a statewide call with mental health providers, and it was noted on that call with her office that being, that people were able to receive therapy from the privacy of their cars, food, and CTC hotspots, so they were able to continue to meet with their therapists for their mental health appointments, and specifically on these that CTC deployed. Next slide, please. We laid 154 residential fiber drops in Crow Wing County from March 1st to May 31st. It equated to a total expense of $200,000. We know specifically in those drops, the ones that relate back to the ISD 181 project, and could call each of those to find out if they were distance learning or telehealth related. We know for certain that out of the 154 drops, 22 of those locations were due to distance learning. And now, if we want to look at projects to keep deploying broadband into the future, this is probably our top proposed project that we'd like to start, and it's County Road 10 in the Borden Lake area. Borden Lake has, is unserved today, and we, I'm sorry, half of Borden Lake is unserved. We serve half of it, and the other half has not been updated or have any service. There are 403 unserved locations, which means that they do not have access to a 25-bike reconnection. This also includes the Garrison Town Hall and the Bay Lake Town Hall, which we do know would be eligible expenses for counties to be able to have internet, all that those, for, in the purpose of being able to host remote meetings and have Wi-Fi in those locations. That total project is $1.3 million. That's a low estimate, we can tell you. The cost of fiber and materials is going up in the middle of the pay. And so, the longer we deploy broadband, the more it's certainly going to cost our, our companies and our different entities that are granting throughout the state and in federal forms. The next is the Camp Van Assic project. This would allow us to have a distance learning center at Camp Van Assic through the YMCA. It would also serve 35 unserved locations. We do know that there's people teleworking in those locations on the Walton Road, including state employees that don't have a return work date yet, that we could show that those were used for hopefully. And also, the distance learning center at Camp Van Assic certainly would be looked at as a COVID-related expense, and one that I think is important for both students. The next projects, I'm just going to show you very quickly, I, they're the ones that I would say are a little lower on our priority list to get completed. The first one is the Forest View Road project. The first one is the Forest View Road project. There are people still in Forest View that still have no ability to connect and get their students connected. Those, it gets really expensive, and this is what I wanted to show you, is for 16 unserved locations, you're talking about a build at $351,000. And the next proposal here is specifically Commissioner Transin. I know that this area is really important, and one that you have brought up in the past, and I just want to show you what it would look like to construct Lake Edward Township, or use some of these funds towards that. There are 538 locations passed in that area, but only 65 of those are unserved, at a price tag of $1.5 million. Those are the locations in our country, across the country in rural America, that it's hard to know how ever be feasible to serve from a financial perspective. And so, for those 65 unserved locations, there's just not a answer today, but certainly wanted to show you that project, because I know it is of importance to you. Next slide. And this is where I'm going to end for the proposal today, but this gives you an idea just in CTC's business of areas that we could use the CARES Act funds for. As I've talked to Administrator Hul about, is that CTC is willing to, if we can be reimbursed for some of the work that we've done, or helped with the projects that we're proposing, we would be willing to be a company that would say, if for some reason the audit didn't pass, that we would look at how we could fund those on our own. And the other piece is, is that if we are awarded these funds, especially the Wi-Fi access point, the COVID-related drop, we then would turn around and put that into projects for next year. So, this isn't CTC getting reimbursed and not reallocating the money out for the broadband project. This would be a reimbursement for us now, that then we would put out into broadband deployment next year. I just want to reiterate, we are on a very short timeline, because the ground does freeze. And so, if any of these projects you'd like, as part of the CARES Act, we will know on those a very short order, just based on our geographic location. And with that, I'll close. Thank you for listening to our project proposal.
Okay, got a question. So, when you say "unserved location," does that mean, and like one slide, it said 16 unserved, does that mean like 16 households is what you mean by that?
Yes. So, that would be 16 households that is deemed unserved in the federal broadband map. So, in Crow Wing County today, there's 26,033 households in the last census. And there's about a 9% amount of them that don't have any service today, Commissioner Coring, are considered unserved today. So, that's what we wanted to show, those are the households that have no access to the 25-by-3 connection.
Okay. Say, Kristi, what happens with, you know, the maps you're showing really kind of cuts off at Pequot Lakes and Breezy Point, what about the northern part of the county for coverage in broadband?
Well, Commissioner Brecken, you know I'm very interested in the Pequot Lakes area, specifically industrial park that exists with the Xcel Energy build going into that. I have had some conversations with Xcel Energy at this point, very early conversations. But again, you know, TDS is the primary service provider in that area, and we would have to look at going into competition with them, and if we can make a model work to be able to compete in those areas. And so, when you look into those areas, CTC doesn't have a presence today, and so financially, those are very big numbers to jump into those.
Okay. Has TDS been involved in these discussions at all?
No, and Mr. Chairman members, there's a wide variety of other companies that get involved in this. And so, we have not had time to reach out to absolutely every one of them, and the timelines are so short here, that getting it in the ground on time is really a limiting factor.
Yeah. Mr. Hul, if I can, I guess I'd like to make sure that this is kind of on the radar too a little bit, but attending a Kichigami Regional Library meeting, I'd really like to have a handle on who all is going to have funding in regards to. I know they're going to be getting some monies also, and they've talked about investing in broadband in their region or district. So, we're going to have to have some coordination with the other entities that will having some monies that they can invest into these, so that we're not all working independent.
Yes. Any other questions on that for now? And, you know, at this stage, I'm just trying to get you to focus broadly on what are the priorities? Where do you want to spend these resources, if you do? The second one is nonprofits, and there's kind of two components here. Kara had reached out to nonprofit service providers that Community Services works with in the community, and so you can see the list of, those are the amounts that they thought they could actually deliver for the programs and services that they have, and Kara's here, so she can talk about those if you want.
So, they came up with those numbers. We didn't say, "I'm going to give you this."
No. It was a dialogue about, okay, here are the requirements, here's the eligibility criteria, could that be put to good use? I was kind of surprised at how low the dollar amounts were.
And they know that they have to, I don't know, prove, I guess would be the right word, they have to prove that they've spent that money, and what they've spent it on for, by December 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, Kara, I don't know if you have anything that you want to add about those? You can answer questions, if you will. I also reached out.
I have a question. They tell us this amount, if they spend it and it's not qualifying, do they pay it back, or do we pay it back?
Right now, we haven't gotten that far. And so, you know, I'm pretty confident if we're talking about like rental assistance, mortgage assistance, those kinds of things, food, shelter, for people that got unemployed, you know, it's going to be, I think we're on pretty solid ground there. So, there again, you know, the priorities, but then the eligibility criteria, the logistics. We have to make sure that we cross the Ts and dot the Is.
And I'm right behind you, so.
Oh, didn't want to startle you.
I have had really clear communication with the nonprofits that I've spoken to, and shared all of the eligibility information, as well as the criteria and the expenses, and we've talked through potential uses, and if that would qualify or not. And Nick has been on board as well to have discussions about what might be eligible too. So, we've been really clear with our nonprofit partners on what this might look like, as well as our expectations related to reporting. And then also, the coordinating of effort, right? So, we don't want to give an organization X amount, and then they don't spend it to what we agreed on. We want to have the entities that we've allocated funding to, to be talking, to ensure that they're utilizing the funds in a coordinated manner as best we can for the citizens who need the money. So, we're drawing down all of the dollars that we allocate, so we've had discussions about that as well.
Ms. Chairman also reached out to Kim Rollins with United Way, and it's just really trying to find community partners that might have the best connections with different sectors of the community. And so, the nonprofit sector, we thought the United Way probably has the best connections in the community with the nonprofit sector. And so, we asked him to kind of reach out to folks that she's aware of in the nonprofit sector, and so I'm going to ask him just to tell you a little bit about what she has found in, you know, in moving about the community and asking questions of that sector. Kim, go ahead, you're up.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute. Thank you for your time this morning, Commissioners. I'm Kim Rollins, I'm the Executive Director of Lake Erie United Way, and I've been in contact with a lot of nonprofits, and most recently, we just had a granting round. We transitioned from one year, or from two-year granting cycle to a one-year granting cycle in the COVID relief. And so, we saw a dramatic increase in required for applicants, and so, there's a big need out there, especially looking at the profits have incurred through COVID-19. And so, there's a lot of need, and just making sure that we can clearly define what the requirements are. I think the sooner we can get this out there, the better. I know that there's a lot of teams that are working with, you know, shelter requirements right now, on getting assistance, rental assistance, and keeping everybody in their homes. Because, you know, the back end of this, we're just starting to see the effect of COVID-19 now, and I think it's going to be a continuation through this year and next year.
You have any questions for Kim?
Say, Kim, are you, from the food shelves in the area, are you seeing a major increase in their, the usage and people looking for them for assistance?
There's, we're starting to see that now, we hadn't until recently, and so, it's starting to, I think it's starting to ramp up a little bit more. I think people are just, like I said just now, starting to see the effects, and I think it's going to continue, have a continuation on those effects of people needing assistance, especially if the additional $600 on unemployment runs out, there's, I think there's going to be a drastic increase of people needing assistance.
Okay.
Commissioner Brecken, to your point, quick, I met with the Foods, Crow Wing Energize Food Coalition yesterday, and we talked about their need to have a centralized location in which to bring food for other nonprofit, or other food shelves to come and pick up the foods. So, for example, if we were to help, Sharing Bread has offered to be potentially a location to have a walk-in fridge and freezer. And let's say Sharing Bread went to pick up a truckload of food from Costco, because they have an agreement with Costco where they can pick up food that's close to the expiration date, or things like that. Then we could store, we, not me, they could store their food in that central location at Sharing Bread, and then the other food shelves can come to Sharing Bread and pick up that food when it's convenient for them. Right now, they don't have that, so they're, they have SUVs full of food, and they're trying to get it to each and every food shelf in the county, which is kind of taxing to do on a Sunday, when you have to go pick up a truckload of strawberries and get them around the county. So, we talked about something like that as a possible eligible expense yesterday.
Okay, very good.
The other thing I would suggest about nonprofits is, at least for me, when I was originally thinking about it, I guess I gravitated towards health and human service nonprofits, probably because I work in county government, right? But there's a lot of other nonprofits that are out there in the community. Chambers of Commerce are nonprofits, the YMCA, there's just churches, and so there's a wide range of nonprofits in the community. It's also a sector of the community that I think did not qualify for as much of the federal and state aid programs that was targeted towards private business. So, we're suggesting that there could or should be a priority there, the relative priority, in other words, how much, that's up to you, but it's a, that's another possibility that you could engage in. Do you have any questions about that? Our next one, Mr. Chairman, to your point, was about for-profit grants for for-profit businesses in our community. And so, again, we're looking out and seeing who's the community partner that we might be able to work with, that would help to understand not only who are the people who are most in need in our community from a for-profit perspective, but also, who in our community is most in need that hasn't already gotten need met through the Payroll Protection Program, or any of the other financial assistances that have already come down the pike for businesses. Bladech has helped lots of businesses in our community to tap into those other sources, and so they seem to us to be the logical partner to talk about grants for for-profit. Tyler Glynn, who's the Executive Director of Bladech, I asked him to think through how they might play a role, and to reach out to others in his sector of the community. And so, Tyler is here to give you kind of a brief overview of his perspective, and how they think they may or may not be able to help.
Well, thank you, Administrator Hul, and good morning Commissioners. Tyler Glynn with Bladech. Yeah, this is a, this is a big bucket of money to deal with, and to provide the type of assistance that our businesses throughout Crow Wing County will need as a result of COVID-19, is going to be casting a pretty large net. And so, we have to start thinking about this in terms of, you know, size and scope of grant amounts. We have to look at the business sizes. We have to look at, you know, who's affected, and when they were affected. And also, one of the things that I want to be, you know, cautious about is, is that as we look at these funds, and as we look at, you know, the amount of funds that have already gone out from both the federal and the state programs that are available, I think you certainly need to take into consideration who's received funds from where, and how much. As I started putting together application, an application for this process, before this meeting, there are some questions that will come up, and I, you know, certainly am prepared to deal with what those questions might be, and we've had a handful of conversations around this. But I think the focus for the Commissioners is going to be the dollar amounts, and also, who are we helping? And, you know, we also have to look at this and say that, you know, the majority of our businesses in Crow Wing County fall into that, you know, 10 employees and less. So, for the 10 employees and less, you know, current numbers are showing it's about 60, about 70% of our businesses in Crow Wing County fall under that 10 employees or less. But some of those businesses received some assistance through, you know, the City of Brainerd did a grant program here that Bladech assisted with, so that was, there's money that's been provided there. The IDLE program that was set up through the SBA, there was funds available to small businesses through that. There was funds available through PPP, and so, your business didn't have to be, you know, the size of cloud stamping to receive those type of funds. So, you know, small businesses also received PPP money. But the other thing I think we want to make sure that we take into consideration is, is that the executive orders, as they were put out in the state of Minnesota, when the stay-at-home orders were put into place, it would be Executive Order 20-04 and Executive Order 20-08, which were closing down basically our bars and restaurants for the most part, retail, and things like this. But the thing to consider is, is that 72% of our businesses remained open during those closures. So, when we start looking at these grant funds, and where they should go, and to whom they should go, I want people to make sure that they consider that that is still something that's extremely viable. And when we aren't looking at revenue and revenue loss, but we're looking at, you know, do we take into consideration the amount of money that some of these businesses had to incur to be, you know, safely get their doors open when they could, I would look and say those are expenses certainly that fit the, you know, that, you know, passed the smell test, passed the eye test, and all of that, but that also brings into question the size of the grants that we would like to give out. You know, when you look at a business, you know, let's take our two largest resorts in Crow Wing County, is Grandview and Breezy Point, and say, what were the expenses related to those organizations to have their facilities fitted to be able to safely open their doors, and what were those costs? And is that something that this commission, the Commissioner should consider, saying, we can't just put a one-size-fits-all, you know, grant amount out there, but do we need to go into the depths of considering, you know, what true expenses were, you know, were forced upon some of these organizations to be able to get open, which in then turn provides the revenue for the county that is expected each and every summer? So, so those are just some of the things to consider. The application that was just started on, and I know that county staff have looked at this, you know, we were very open to how this looks, and how this should be considered, and what dollar amount should be considered, and, you know, we've got experience putting this together, we've got experience managing something like this, and very comfortable taking in applications, and processing these grants as they come in, and as they are deemed But there's a lot of factors. But there's a lot of factors to consider, you know, is it a first-come, first-served? Is it based off of need? Is it, is it, uh, based off of the amount that they actually spent to, you know, allow their businesses to open safely and spent it on PPE-type equipment that's going to put the, um, their customer base and their employees in a safe, in, safe environment? So, um, you know, with that, I think I'll just open it up. I know this is going to be a, a pretty large discussion, and obviously with the, the largest bucket of money, um, that Administrator Hul identified to be put into this and, uh, into grant funds, I, I would really like to have some conversation around what the Commissioners feel is the best use of these funds, um, and try and create a program that's going to be the best fit for our, for our county and for our businesses that have been tremendously impacted by this pandemic.
Mr. Chairman, the other thing I would point out to you is cities, um, throughout the county, they also have care funds, and they will likely, many of them, reimburse themselves for their own costs, but I think they will have leftover funds that could be put out towards economic development grants, and I think we should reasonably expect that they will. I've had conversations with the two largest cities in our community, and, uh, I think there is, I think it will make good sense for us to try our darndest to come up with one application, one program that we share it with, their funds, they're going to want to make sure that their funds go into their communities, and whether that's Nisswa, Pequot Lakes, Cross Lake, Crosby, doesn't matter, those grant funds from those cities, they're going to want to make sure go into theirs. Ours are more flexible because our geographic boundary is larger, and so I, I would hope that we could try to coordinate that through Bladech with a single, uh, application process. I don't know if we're going to get agreement from everybody to have the same criteria, but if we can, then you would use the city's money first for any applications within that city and exhaust those funds, and then the county funds go out, uh, wherever, um, and we can be used to plug holes within a city or outside of cities as well. So that's one consideration that I think we've got to think about. Here's an example of a program that, um, one county came up with, and you can fill in the dollar amounts and the thresholds with whatever it is that you think is appropriate. Um, but here were the criteria. Award one-time grant of up to $10,000. That means that it, you would have varying grant amounts, not just 5,000 for everybody. Up to 10,000 based upon eligible expenses. Uh, 50 full-time or equivalent or fewer employees as of March 1st, 2020. You can pick a different date, you can pick a different threshold, but that was what this county did. Be a private for-profit organization with a physical permanent address in the county. Be owned by a permanent resident of Minnesota. So they allowed for the possibility that the owner of the business may not reside inside the county, but the business was inside the county. Don't have to do that, but you could do a variation on that. They said that you had to be in good standing with the state, county, and the city in which the business is located. What that means is you don't have any enforcement actions, uh, open against you for violating the planning and zoning rules, you are current on your taxes. By the way, you cannot have a program that allocates money to businesses to pay their property taxes. That would be revenue replacement for us. Now, if it is an eligible expense for the business, some may need the money to pay their taxes, that's none of our concern. You just can't have that be the criteria upon which you would do a grant. The other, uh, couple things they, they had was demonstrate that the business was adversely affected by executive orders related to COVID-19, or demonstrate the financial hardship as a result of COVID-19. Um, and then they did coordinate with cities to use their funds. The Ramsey County program was slightly different, but very similar. So you see, there's a set of criteria. So first, is this a priority? Second, what are the kinds of criteria that you might want to apply to that? Are there questions about the for-profit sector at this point?
I have one thing that I would like to bring up, and so to Tyler, have you heard from any landlords or property management groups that are having issues with people not paying their rent, but then not also being able to negotiate with their banks? What I've heard is that when they try to negotiate with the banks, and I'm talking about the landlord now, what they do is they just tack that on to the end of their loan or mortgage. So really, it's just not any relief, it's just adding, stretching out the note that they might have. And so, I was hoping the sheriff wouldn't leave because I did have a question about squatters being in some of these properties too, who refuse to pay based on the COVID thing, but once they take possession of a unit, they can't get the squatters out at this point under the executive order. Have you heard anything about that and any programs that would give those type of businesses some relief?
So, um, Commissioner Barrows, to, to date, I've heard from two, and both of them have been, um, are some larger, um, landlords in our county, and the questions that have come up is, are there going, is there going to be any relief to, to them? Um, you know, they were obviously greatly impacted by both federal and state guidelines that indicate that they, you know, could not evict someone, they could not, uh, you know, take legal action to remove, obviously to, to pull these people out of their properties, um, without paying rent. Um, so two to this date, and their only question to me was, is there going to be any relief inside of these CARES Act dollars that's, that are going to be, um, eligible for them? I have seen, you know, a couple of these applications that, that Administrator Hul pointed out that identifies as ineligible applicants as, you know, residential rental properties. Um, so residential property owners would be ineligible, that, and that's only, you know, I think two of the applications. I've seen about 12 of them so far, and I think two of them identify residential rental property owners as ineligible, but I, this is a tough, this is a tough area because we're, you know, we're, we, we seem to be, um, they are impacted by COVID because of the guidelines that have been set forth. So, I am not, I'm not saying one way or the other that we should allow them to be considered for eligible for grants dollars, but then the, the counter to that is, is why shouldn't they be? If they've been impacted, this would be an eligible expense. I've, I mean, it would be, they could identify that, uh, they are being impacted by this, their businesses have, have been impacted by COVID-19, so they should be, um, an eligible applicant. But that's, that's certainly open for discussion there, but the two questions that I have got, Commissioner Barrows, have been a result of them asking if there's going to be relief for them, and I've yet to, I'm not answering them to say yes, I'm just saying that this is open for consideration, and there's conversations going on about this right now.
Thank you. Mr. Hul, under that one scenario that you gave us, the $10,000 that would, a business could apply for, would that open it up for these type of businesses?
Mr. Chairman, members, I think, uh, that it is up to you, and all the best we can do is try to be cognizant of unintended consequences. Here's what I get concerned about. We know that, for instance, that the extra $600 a month for unemployment was very helpful to families who were immediately unemployed. We also know that in some instances, people were collecting more on unemployment than they were in their jobs. If we go down the road of mortgage assistance and rental assistance, would we create an incentive for more people to not pay their mortgage or to not pay their rent? It's a tight, it's a, that's a tough call. I don't know. I think, is it eligible? Nick, do you have an opinion?
Commissioner Barrows, the guidance right now and what we are getting from our audit staff is that revenue replacement is not a qualified expense. So, for a landlord, if we're giving them money to make up for lost more, or rental payments, we're actually replacing their revenue. We can go out and we can help with rental assistance that can help support them in the long run, but if we're paying directly to them, right now, guidance is that that's not a qualified piece.
The way you would get, the way you would do that, if you wanted to do that, is they're having difficulty paying their light bill, they're having difficulty paying their mortgage. Um, and, and so, there are ways to get around that revenue replacement, and because the revenue replacement gets dicier, I think we would have to consider that in the for-profit, in the nonprofit, and in this particular instance. So there are ways to, to do it if you're inclined to do it. It's a kind of, it's a little more of a dicey area.
I think there's an assumption too, that when the unemployment plus the 600 was given to these people, that, and perhaps the majority of them have paid their rent during this time, but there probably are some that chose to fall back on the directive that they didn't have to pay rent at this time, so, in my opinion, misusing some of that money.
I have a little doubt that that's true in some cases.
So why, why do you think that Bladech is so well-fitted to, in essence, be the administrator of, of this? And I mean, do they have, do they have the staff? We don't, we don't have the staff to handle this, or, or I, I guess I, I'm wondering why?
We don't. Um, that's the simple answer to your question. We don't have a staff to, to do it.
But Bladech has just got a whole bunch of staff sitting over there, ready to do this? Are you going to hire more staff, or what?
What I think you're going to find is that Bladech is not engaged in as much new business growth right now because of COVID, and so I do think they have capacity. Two, I think they have, they have a better knowledge of the federal and state programs that people have already qualified for than we do, because they've been helping businesses to qualify for them.
So, so if I, before I forget, so if, if somebody, if we were going to have Bladech kind of be the administrator of this, then if they, uh, there'd be a set, set of criteria, boom, 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 and if somebody met the criteria, they automatically, uh, are accepted. Bladech's not going to be picking, be saying, you get it, no, you're not going to get it. Okay, you're shaking your head, no, so I'm assuming that's...
And, and one of the ways, I guess I would propose that you can safeguard to make sure that it's reflecting your priorities, is to appoint one or two of you to sit in on the group of people that is reviewing the applications. Now, you don't have to do that.
Well, that's what concerns me. I don't want to, you know, have somebody that's a business that's in, because we, we had that meeting in my district, you know, you, and, and I don't want to have an application go through there and is denied, and I don't know anything about it, you know, on why it was denied, and, um, follow along with that, or?
I do, and what I, what I don't know how to protect you from is, if you think about the numbers of grants that will go out and the specific story with each one of them, even if we got a list of, here's the businesses that got a grant, here's how much, here's the ones who didn't, here's how much they applied for, how would we convey the backstory to you about the why? Why they got a grant, why they didn't? And so I am worried about that, um, too, and the way I thought to try to get around that was to involve you in the process of reviewing the applications. I don't know if that's, you can't all five do it, so you won't have knowledge of every single one of them, but at least it was a subset of you, I thought.
We could all five do it if we had an open meeting like this.
You can, but think about, you might be looking at 1,000 applications. And so how long would it take you to do that in a public setting, going through them one by one by one by one? You could do that.
So, would we be giving, would the county board be giving, uh, in essence, some of the authority to administer those? Ultimately, this, this all fact falls back on us again, like it, everything does here. And so, um, it just, you know, I know I sound like a broken record, but I want to be able to have oversight, because we do have oversight responsibilities.
Absolutely.
And I want to make sure that, that this is being done the proper way, I guess. I, I guess if you think that Bladech is a way to, yeah, go ahead, Tyler.
Thank you, Commissioner Coring. Um, there is some, this is why we would set, just to hopefully answer the question, this is why we would set the eligibility requirements, um, to a point where it is very clear-cut who is eligible, who is not. That's step one. The second step is, is that you set this, if we set this up properly, you would set this up on a first-come, first-served basis. And I know that when we're looking at this, saying potentially, you know, $3 million that's sitting out there, that is a lot of, um, applications, and depending on the size that the Commissioners feel is the most appropriate size for a grant, or if it is based on business need, um, related to COVID-related expenses, then that, that creates something a little bit different. But the first, the first-come, first-served is, you know, we put an application out there, you, you make it a fillable online form, once that comes through, you know, we own the system that would manage that, so it's, it's date stamped, date and time stamped, so as they come through, and then you use a, as, as Administrator Hul mentioned, you use a, you know, a, a couple of the Commissioners, um, as many as you would see fit, um, staff from our office to go through these applications, make sure they meet the criteria as identified, and then award them, and there's, it cre, it pulls away any of the gray area, if you will, if there are very strict guidelines put in place, which was exactly what I would intend to do, is put, along with, uh, county staff, is to identify very strict guidelines based on what is eligible, put that out, and then as the applications come in, we just, we go through the list, and yes, ultimate oversight does sit with the county Commissioners, um, but there, if we put these in correctly, there should be, shouldn't be many questions, if any, as to why someone didn't receive a grant.
And then you also could have an appeal process, um, like you have done with the property taxes in the past. Think about the criteria as you giving direction on things that are going to happen on a recurring basis. That's what policies are designed to do. You're giving staff direction on how you want them to handle specific circumstances. They're the bumpers on the bowling alley, if you will. And so when you set criteria, you are giving guidance.
And then another thing too that popped into my head is, how do we, uh, have outreach? Because it makes me think of a decision that we just made on ATV trail. All of a sudden, I got several calls and said, hey, I didn't know anything about this, I didn't get to vote on it. And I said, well, it was in the paper, it was on the county website, you know, I mean, how do you, how do we do outreach to these businesses that are busy out there, Oak Lawn, Green Lantern, the, the Bird's Nest, uh, Businesses in Garrison, Pine Center, Fort Ripley? How do we reach out? Because Brainerd Dispatch is two days a week now, if somebody's not reading Wednesday or Sunday, how do we get, and I don't think people are on their computer all the time seeing of what's going on, so how do we reach out to these people so that after, because you said first-come, first-served, and all of a sudden they go, wow, I heard about it, and, and now it's too late?
That's a great question. The one thing I can guarantee you is that after the fact, someone's going to come forward to you and say, I never heard about it. I do think what we learned from our Property Tax Relief Program, because I think we thought there were going to be more applicants, that this is one we should invest, just like the land sale. You were talking about that the other day.
Yes, I heard it on the way in again. It was a great ad saying we're going to have the land sale.
We need to do that here. So, radio, I would suggest, newspaper and social media, I don't think a billboard is appropriate, but radio and newspaper ads, in my little mind, I would see a one-month application process. So, you're, you're advertising, here, we're, we're, we're looking for applicants, if you're interested, please apply, please apply, here's where to go. That's the best I can think to do.
Is there any way in our Tyler tax system that we have that's, uh, commercial properties that, that we could spit out some kind of a, a list and, and we could maybe send a mailer to them? I mean, even a letter and say, hey, we're, we're taking applications, um...
We do have a commercial designation in the tax system, and so we could produce that list. The downside of the list is, if you set, uh, a limit on the number of employees so that you're targeting small businesses, we don't have that.
Yeah.
And so, you know, um, Home Depot would get a letter, and I'm not sure Home Depot is one we want to target.
No, no, but we don't have to. No, no, but we don't have to. If they don't meet the criteria, then...
We wouldn't know whether they meet the criteria. All we would know is whether they're a commercial tax class.
Right.
So it's, and considering what Tyler said, seventy-two percent of the businesses that were out there continued to operate, what that means is, we're gonna send one to a hundred percent, and there's only twenty-eight percent that we're looking to target. So that's an awful lot of letters to businesses that automatically won't qualify if that's a criteria.
I just, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're focusing in on small or medium-size, you know? I, I can't prove this, but I know that there was banks that were scrambling, I'm sorry about that. I, they were scrambling on, on the weekend where the Paycheck Protection Act, they were calling their favorite businesses and saying, "Hey, get your application in." And they were processing those, and then all of a sudden, the money was gone, and, and then more money was authorized, but...
And that same thing is gonna happen here to some extent. Because no matter what we allocate here, even if it was the entire eight million, it's not gonna fill the hole.
No, I know that. So, back to, back to my question is, another question is, so, so let's just say hypothetically, let's say we gave like a block grant, like a ten thousand dollar a year business, ten thousand here, ten thousand there. Do they have to somehow prove by some kind of a criteria that we have that that money is? Because if you, if you look at it, they, they, in paying their property taxes, if they were out of business and had no revenue coming in, they need that money to pay their property taxes.
Yes.
So that would be an eligible expense on their part.
On their part, yes.
And then, so then, if the federal government came in and did a spot check, that would be an allowable expense?
I believe so.
Okay.
You know, I believe so. That's about the answer I can give you.
Okay.
What I, what I think is important is that you must, in the application process, require them to produce the documentation that will survive the audit.
Okay.
And you do that by setting the criteria and what kind of documentation they must submit.
Who would collect, would, would Tyler?
We'd keep it.
But they would collect it, and then we would, we would have it?
Yes, because it's auditable. And in my mind, the recipient of the grant must have an eligible expense. And so I think you can get that accomplished in the application process itself. The documentation must be submitted.
Okay.
And then we keep it, subject to audit.
Right.
That's how I would suggest it could work.
Mr. Chair, these are federal funds, so the money must be spent within accordance of CRF itself and federal guidelines.
CRF?
Coronavirus Relief Funds.
Okay.
Multiple names for how this funding is coming through. There's five or six different titles for the same stuff. We have to have the documentation, because every sub-recipient of these funds is required to produce the documentation showing what the expenses were, how they were approved, everything along that lines. That will all have to funnel its way back to us, so that when the audit comes, they spot-check everything. We're responsible for every dollar down to the end user. So we'll have to have all this documentation on hand.
And that would apply to whether you do a broadband project, that would apply whether you're doing a nonprofit grant. The documentation's gonna be really important for us, to protect ourselves.
Okay.
The last category, well, there's two actually. The last category that I wanted to talk to you about was reimbursing ourselves for our own expenses. You know that you've been getting a regular report of the expenses that we've incurred related to COVID. We have probably not done, we have not scrubbed our own staff time as well as I would like to, us to do, to make sure that we are recovering fully what we can in terms of staff reimbursement. There's a squishy area in the guidance here, too. This, the federal guidance says, "The CARES Act Fund is designed to provide ready funding to address unforeseen financial needs and risks created by the COVID-19 public health emergency. For this reason, and as a matter of administrative convenience, in light of the emergency nature of this program, a state, territorial, local, or tribal government may presume that payroll costs for public health and public safety employees are payments for services substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency." I read that to say, it's presumptively eligible. I think that's what it says, but then there is some debate going on among local units of government about whether or not, no, it's not presumptively eligible. You have to be able to show that they have done something substantially different. Is it presumptively eligible? That's a hundred percent, that's payroll costs from March first to December thirty-first. Boom, you can, you can reimburse yourself. Or does it mean we have to have the documentation for how they spent the time differently? There is documentation. Think about in the jail, for instance. We can't reimburse ourselves for lost revenue. But we went from probably a one to, and these are numbers are fictitious, so you, just for illustration, a one-to-seven inmate-to-staff ratio, and the inmate population went down. We did not lay off staff. It went to a one-to-three-point-five inmate-to-staff ratio. And we needed to do that to create the social distancing necessary to prevent the spread of the virus. I'm, I would argue that that's pretty solid case for half of your staff costs are COVID-related. Because in the normal one-to-seven ratio, you wouldn't have needed them. In the one-to-three-and-a-half ratio, the reason you kept them was because you needed to do it for COVID. You still had all the pods open, you still had to staff all the pods, but that ratio changed dramatically. Law enforcement out on the street, they didn't do traffic stops as much as they were. They were not doing self-initiated field activities the way they once were. That difference in what they were doing theoretically is staff you could have laid off. Now, we didn't, because we kept waiting for the shoe to drop, and so we would have needed them. I think that staff cost would be eligible. But you see how there's a difference between a hundred percent presumptively eligible and the documentation path? I don't know which way that's gonna turn out. We are suggesting that we can comfortably, I think, document the one-point-five million. If there's a presumptive eligibility, I think we would document higher than one-point-five million. And so we have also set aside that last category, contingency. If we can get more reimbursement, you could draw from that contingency. If you do the economic assistance grants, and you find that the needs are way much bigger than what we thought they were going to be, you could allocate from that contingency. The nonprofit community, you could allocate. That's just to retain flexibility for you guys about how the priorities may shift after you actually collect more information. I think this presumptive eligibility question is gonna get answered for us. It's not answered yet.
So what about us ramping up on supplies that we've been using? I mean, you bought sixty thousand dollars' worth of masks. I mean, would it be wise for us to ramp up on that and buy? I mean, don't wanna be a hoarder, but, I mean, would it be prudent for us to ramp up on supplies? And then would that be an eligible expense to be paid for out of this?
It's clearly eligible.
Yes.
Whether we should do it or not, John's here, John was here. And I would suggest that we should ask them those kinds of questions. And that could be part of Crowing County's reimbursement, or you could draw it from the contingency.
But don't you think that we should have like, like a strategic reserve of, of if something bad happens, that we've got supplies on hand?
And PPE is the arena within which I think that probably is most important.
Right.
And it has gotten to be, you know, face masks aren't quite as, it varies, you know, depending on the intensity of the crisis within communities. I've heard face masks, we now have an adequate supply, but we're having a hard time getting gowns. They're in shorter supply. And so, there is an element of, you're just trying to guess what you're, what you could need if things get bad. And it's not a perfect science, it's a very imperfect science. But I think you're absolutely right, that's an appropriate question to ask, and I am comfortable in telling you that that is COVID CARES Act eligible.
Kind of like I see people on TV that are like, "Why wasn't the government ready?" I, I don't know how you can be ready for everything. An F-five tornado could come right through here. How are we gonna be ready for that? I mean, we have redundancy and of different things, but can't be prepared for everything.
My crystal ball's kinda foggy.
There's another fella with a beard in here, do we, are we gonna hear from him? Or, I don't, I don't even know.
I believe he is here with either CTC or with Bladeck.
Oh, okay.
And so I'm not sure.
Does he want to talk? Steve?
Yeah.
Steve, do you wanna say something? Some wisdom, give us some wisdom?
Unless you have any questions broadband project-related.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
Mr. Chair, I would just suggest that first, you try to figure out the buckets. What buckets do you think are appropriate? And then try to allocate the amounts you would like to put in any of the buckets. This is just a framework for your discussion, that's all it is. Figure out what your priorities are, and then I do wanna have a discussion. But if you're not gonna do for-profit or nonprofit grants, there's no sense having a discussion about what the criteria for it should be.
So back to the, the nonprofit grants. So this list here, is this just a list of, just that we, people we've reached out to? Because I know there's, there's more.
Yes.
For example, the senior center, I...
There's another one.
Huh?
There was another one I hadn't thought about.
Well, I think that, that this has had an effect. There's a lot of seniors that, and, and I don't think we realize that the mental effect this is having on people that are shut in and can't have interaction with other people. You know, that they've, I think Rosemary's mom would go to the senior center all the time, but hasn't been able to go.
No, she hasn't been there since it closed down.
I'm, I'm a little afraid that one million may be underestimating the relative need of nonprofits in our community, but I don't know.
And then when I go home on, on Thirteenth, or not Thirteenth Street, on Oak Street, I go by the soup kitchen, and I always, you know, if I go home and it's right at dinnertime, there's a lot of people there. I don't see them on here, and I would assume that, so, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I have been in contact with a number of nonprofits, profits, and at the time of the publishing of this document, these are the ones that I had had the conversations with. I have a spreadsheet of the, the communications that I've had. What we know is Kim had run this number this morning. There are over six-hundred-and-fifty nonprofits in our county. Now, will all of them apply? Probably not. But we do have a, a pretty large number of folks in the community who could potentially be eligible. Really quick, Tyler, Kim and I had met to talk about the application process, and the nonprofit piece, or arm, if you choose to put some funding toward that, we could utilize that same application or a similar one, and they could come through that system. And then I would just recommend, take it or leave it, that Kim and I could be kind of the overseers of the nonprofit grants. And then I could even bring to you a report, or a summary, or something like that in terms of the funding that, that we had approved and/or supplied on a weekly basis, or, or whatever you so choose that way.
Okay. So, I, I, I'm, I was, I'm thinking about how people reacted when this, and how everybody was like going crazy about toilet paper, and I was thinking if that was an allowable expense, maybe we could ramp up on that so we're good for a few years. But I don't know why everybody was so afraid they were gonna run out of toilet paper, but anyway, it just kinda struck me as funny.
So, Tim, just a quick question on townships. They're getting some money also, is that correct?
We have an additional, well, yes. Cities and townships, almost all of them, qualified for a direct allocation. And I think I've supplied you with the runs previously, so that you knew how much those were. In addition to that, Crowing County has been allocated approximately another two-hundred-thousand above. And that is for small, and, small cities and small townships that did not qualify for a direct allocation. Timothy Township is a good example of that. Or we got money for the unorganized territories. And they can apply to Crowing County for reimbursement for their expenses. I am having a little bit of a difficult time imagining what Timothy Township's expenses were for COVID-related expenses. And so we will have to reach out to them. And if they don't request reimbursement, or what they request reimbursement for is not eligible, then those become county funds. All of the cities and townships, any money that they do not spend by, and I believe it's November first, they must turn it over to Crowing County. And if we don't spend it by December first, then we must return it to the state of Minnesota. And the state of Minnesota has until December thirty-first to return it to the federal government. So there's this tiered clawback, if you will.
My question is in regard to the broadband issue, though, that we have noted here, is would they be willing to spend their money for broadband in their townships, for example?
I haven't asked any of them that question. The allocations for cities and townships on a per capita basis was about a third per capita, is what the counties got. Twenty-five bucks per capita versus seventy-five bucks per capita. Cities and townships did not see allocations of a sizable nature. I think a good chunk of the cities and townships will not have a ton left after reimbursement. Our larger cities and townships may. And so I think, I, I could imagine Brainerd, Baxter, Niswau, Pequot, Crosby having excess funds that they might wish to plow into economic development grants, but I don't see that happening for all of them. Now, that's a guess. We can reach out, we have not.
So one more question for Christie. On the broadband product, projects that you've identified here, those can be done in this timeframe?
They can be done in this timeframe if we have approval very soon. And the, there's a few issues. One is the weather, but the also is, there's a supply and demand issue with getting the equipment that you need to get the broadband. The fiber optics has taken huge delays. So if we have approval quickly, we can move forward and have them done by the end of the year. If, if not, I don't see that we'd be able to commit to getting them done in the summer timeframe.
So when you say quickly, can you give me a more definite timeline?
Within a week.
Okay.
So then a question to you, Mr. Hu. If this is, if you're squishy, or you're in a gray area on this, are you recommending that we move forward, even though you seem uncertain if this is an allowable expense?
If you are interested in that, then what I would suggest is, our agreement with the co-op should include language that says, if it is after the fact determined not to be eligible, that the co-op will reimburse the funds. And that protects you.
Okay.
And as I look at the projects that are here, I think the Camp Vanossick one tends to stand out as a distance learning. They are working with the school district to use Camp Vanossick as a distance learning center, to spread kids out. I think that has a pretty direct COVID argument, that's pretty solid. I also think town halls and getting broadband capacity into town halls has a pretty direct COVID effect for both election purposes and for remote meeting purposes. I, I feel more confident about that. To the extent that you would approve any broadband project, I would also want us to document the numbers that we believe will be eligible for distance learning, kids that we have added service for, and elderly for telemedicine. And then see if we can't figure out if we have allowed for remote work capacity, and probably through surveying. So we would assemble the best documentation we could. That's what we can do.
And Tim, are you only looking at your projects, or are you looking at the projects that CTC submitted that's in their packet?
I'm only looking at the ones that I thought we could deliver this fast, and so... I'm only looking at the ones that I thought we could deliver this fast, and so.
They have a different list that she said they could deliver.
I'm sorry, what?
They gave a different list that they said they could deliver in the packet.
Yeah, I see that there's four projects, right?
There are one, two, three, four, five, six.
Two of those line items are for reimbursement for the Wi-Fi drops, are they not?
Yep.
Yeah.
And then the last four
They are.
are future oriented projects. And I think what CTC is saying is, to the extent that you can reimburse them for the expenses they've already incurred, which are clearly COVID or CARES Act eligible, they would plow those funds back into future broadband projects. So you're reimbursing them for funds, now that could apply to any telecommunications company. And that also could be an approach. We would be willing to reimburse you as long as you invest in broadband. You then need to figure out, well, how much broadband are you gonna get for the reimbursement? So that get, I don't know, it's, I think the timeline is what really is crunching us up against the wall in broadband.
So if Christie needs to know if we're gonna move forward with this in a week, that the next time that we're together, there's the next county board meeting. So are we making, are we needing to make a decision today? Or can we make the decision at the next county board meeting? And then are we making a decision? Do we need to make a decision today on the list of nonprofits? And do we need to make a decision on the grants and how we're gonna, business grants and how we're gonna move forward with that? Are you asking for us to make a decision today?
No, I don't think you can, because we're in committee of the whole, right? We don't.
Well.
We can, we don't. So I think next Tuesday, yes, I would like to, you give us direction on what is it that you would like us to bring back? At the very least, I think what you're hearing from Christie is the broadband would need to be a pretty specific authorization. The other buckets would be just setting priorities. I, we will not have eligibility criteria flushed out for you by next Tuesday. But if you say, we want to set aside a million for nonprofits, well, then we're gonna go busily start to work on that. And I want feedback from you today about what are the kinds of eligibility criteria you would like to see on the application. So it's more direction today.
Well, I guess I'd like to just see more, I mean, reach out to more of the nonprofits and like I just said, the senior center, I don't know, I guess I don't know, because I know they do meals. I mean, has that had an effect? I don't know. So, and if Christie's okay with us making the decision in a week, you said it would give us a week, so next Tuesday is our county board meeting. If you know by then, if we're in favor of these, what we have on our list, and then if by chance, it's not an eligible expense, if you're okay with your company paying that back, then I guess we could move forward, is, you're shaking your head yes, so I'm.
That's correct, committee.
Okay.
I did have a conversation with Charter as well, and her answer to that question was no.
Okay, okay.
Is what it is. But there's other companies too, and we haven't had a conversation with those. But again, it's the timelines here that are really
Right.
bumping us up against the wall.
Well, I'm gonna go around the room and I, you know, I like to put you guys on the spot.
You do.
Especially you, Steve.
Correct.
So I, but what I'm, what I'm trying to ascertain is a consensus so that staff or the administrator can figure out how we're gonna move forward. So Steve, can you just give us what your thoughts are going right down the list from, from one, two, three, four, what, where do you, where do you think you're at so we can figure out which direction we're going?
Well, rather than going individually,
Yeah.
I'm in favor of every one of these, I think that's a great starting point. I think the top one, the broadband, I, if I could give my approval today, I would say yes to that right now to get that headed into the dirt, so to speak.
Yep.
The rest of them, I think that we need to figure out that criteria, but I think that we need to do something for these small businesses and these nonprofits in our county. So I would not hesitate one bit to endorse this. But I do wanna see, what are those criteria and thresholds that we would put into an application process, so?
I'd like that discussion, but I think first it's priorities.
For the businesses too, I wanna see what, what that application looks like and how we're going to process that. And I would be, feel more comfortable, and I think Tyler's okay with this, is if we had, if we designated two county commissioners to be a part of that and the review of these applications, because I still say that elected people need to have some type of oversight into it, so. Rose, go ahead, Tyler.
Commissioner Coring, for the group, I would absolutely recommend that. I would, I would welcome that with open arms, I, that's, that would be, I think it's absolutely necessary.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Rosemary, what's your thoughts?
Well, I kinda have to agree with Steve, there isn't a thing on this list that's a bad idea.
Okay.
With the broadband, I wanna go with the CTC projects, which are four projects, not just the three that, that Tim, as long as they have agreed that, you know, that they would try to figure out something.
The issue there is the, I put a bucket of 1.5 and just the three projects are 2.1. And so we'll have to have conversations with CTC about, you know, can they fund the difference if we got 1.5? And I haven't asked Christie that question, so.
No, I said if, if we can discuss with them and our, and she mentioned that they might be willing. They might not either when they find out how much it is. So I mean, we've got a lot of discussing, just because I say that I agree with this, you know, nonprofits. There are so many more that aren't on this list that 1 million doesn't, I mean, I don't think 8 million is gonna cover what we want, even though it sounds like an undaunting process to try to figure out in a short amount of time. The businesses, that's so important to, you know, probably if I had to go with anything, you know, the businesses, making sure that, that everyone doesn't close up, that's where I'd put my money first. I don't know, nonprofits, that's the same thing, you know, there's no good way to answer this because all of them are so important.
Bill, what do you, what's your thoughts?
I join the other commissioners on this, I think these are the major priorities. And I think there's a lot of, you know, digging into it that we have to go, so I will agree with everybody and support this.
Okay. I, I would concur, the only thing is, is I, I still say that, you know, when we, I, I just need to specify that when we say federal money, we, it's almost like we think it's money from heaven or somewhere. But it's, I don't know about you guys, maybe you don't pay federal taxes, but I do, so it's my tax dollars. And I just, I mean, I just feel like, I was just thinking, I had a flashback to when I used to have, I had three grandmas. I had a great grandma and I had two grandmas and, you know, got lots of presents. And my dad said, you don't need that many presents. You know, it's like we got 8 million dollars and if we, if we can't find a way to spend that, I don't think there's any shame in saying, no, we don't need that much. And, and it goes back if we can't figure out how to do it in the proper way. I don't think there's anything wrong with that at all. I mean, if you look, I don't even, I haven't even looked lately, I guess, it isn't that I don't care, but I know we were at like 23 trillion dollars in debt. I don't know how, I don't know how we're ever gonna, that's never gonna get paid off, but, but, and now they're talking about another 3 trillion dollar stimulus package, my God. I mean, eventually this has gotta hit a wall, a brick wall at some point, so, so.
Commissioner, I, I think one thing that will flesh us out will be the timelines that were
Yeah.
required to meet, so if there are dollars left over, we'll have to turn them back. I don't think there's any doubt about that.
And I don't think there's any shame in that.
Absolutely not.
No. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I would like, I, I thank you, I appreciate the direction on the priorities at the high level. Let's talk a little bit, if you don't mind, about the criteria. What, what's a small business? How many employees? You know, the, what would you like to see as the criteria on the application? Is there any consensus around those issues? And you may recall the examples I gave you, an award up to X, what's X? How many employees or less? You don't have to have any of these, by the way, they're just examples. That the business has to have a physical location in the county. Does the owner have to physically live in the county? Do they have to have their taxes current? What, whatever you want it to be.
All of that, all of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's good, do you have any that we've missed that just come off the top of your head? I would maybe suggest you could consider, although there are pros and there are cons there, whatever you do here. One, somebody's gonna be at 51 full-time employees, right? No matter what you decide.
Right.
You might consider, do you want grants to go to franchises? So on the one hand, a franchise can be locally owned. Franchises are typically in the restaurant business. A McDonald's is a franchise.
And Glenn Cook is a resident. And he owns McDonald's in Garrison, in Brainerd, and in Brainerd.
And they weren't, they were closed and the drive-ups were still open. And so what portion of their business did they lose or not? Do you wanna leave that open for the application process? Prove it. Or do you wanna say, we don't think they suffered enough loss compared to others and so we're going to exclude it? Do you wanna include landlords? What are the, what other criteria can you think of that you would like us to include? Otherwise, what I'll do is, we'll just do a draft and bring it back for your consideration.
Well, to me, the first thing that comes to mind is, I think it was Tyler that said 74% of businesses were still open. You're shaking your head, so I'm, okay, but I, to me, I want, I'd like to first focus on the ones that were closed. I'm going back to when Bill and you and I went over to the, I think it's called the Bird's Nest, something like that. They were completely closed. I mean, they, well, they, no, I guess they were, people could pick up food there.
Yes.
You know, and it's the same thing with Green Lantern, they could pick up food there or Oak Lawn. Okay, but they were, but as far as anybody, there was, they don't have any drive-through or anything.
And that's, I think maybe a criteria you could hang your hat on. I think those businesses that, that had to switch to takeout, but they were not in the drive-up business, suffered more
Right.
than those who already had an established drive-up business. It was another way to provide business. I don't think the losses are the same, were there losses, of course.
So if you get enough feedback from us, are you and is maybe Tyler gonna help put together that application? And then maybe at next county board meeting that we would review that and?
Authorize it or not?
Authorize it at that time?
Yeah, and so it doesn't have to be just today, but is there anything you wanna make sure of today? You've got to have this on the application. The more direction you give us, the better application we're gonna bring back to you.
And if we don't have all the ideas today, if we could, if you could email Tim from now, you know, because I.
Do you wanna include landlords?
Does anybody have any idea of, do you wanna have some limitation on employees? Or what's your thoughts on that? Steve?
I'm comfortable with the 50.
50?
That has been identified, I'm, but I also wanna say about the landlords that I would like to see them included. Because I think they do have some expenses that would qualify. It might not be a lot, and hopefully they can get through the gray matter to get to where they do qualify. But I think that it's important that we not exclude them. That's my, that's what I feel.
I guess I, I would agree with that partly because, again, you know, some people didn't have to pay rent because they were told they didn't have to pay rent. So I mean, they were, they were impacted by decisions that were made at the government level.
What other stuff, Tim? Keep asking questions to try to flush out some answers here if you can.
Chair, Tyler would like to speak.
Who?
Tyler.
Oh, Tyler, yeah, Tyler, go ahead.
Um, so I wanna just provide a little additional background. So the numbers that we have based on businesses in Crow Wing County, we roughly have 11% of, we'll call it about 36, so 3,600 businesses that are registered with the state in Crow Wing County. 11% of them have 20 or more employees. So when you start looking at employee numbers, I think that's something to make sure you take into consideration. But I, I, I've sent a preliminary grant application over and I know that Kara has looked at it and I believe Nick has started to look at it as well, that we've, so that's in process. There's, there's some language that's already there, and I know we'll be able to work to flush more of this out to give you a good application and guidelines by next week. But the other thing to consider, and I don't, it's, when we look at some of our larger employers in the county, you know, two of them in particular, our larger resorts, were physically shut down, you know, because of the, the executive orders and the costs that they had. And I, I know that we look at those differently, we always will, but it's, you know, do we have some consideration for a company the size of cloth stamping, the company which wasn't shut down? But, so it's a breezy point or, or grand view to say they had a lot of expenses related to that and they're over that number. Do we exclude them? And I just want that to be part of your conversation.
Good point. You, you could also then, if you wanna broaden who's in it, not have an employee limit, but the grant limit, it's up to $10,000. That would also limit it, but if you have the criteria without employees, that's gonna make a lot more businesses eligible.
So Tyler, what did you say there's, how many registered with the state of Minnesota businesses in Crow Wing County?
The num, the numbers are a couple, they're 2018, at the end of 2018, the, the numbers are just over 3,600.
Kara?
Mr. Chair, just a comment on the landlord inclusion. So as a part of the rental assistance that we're looking at, some of our nonprofit agencies to handle that work, the rental assistance would be paid directly to the landlord to ensure that they're made whole with the rent that they're owed. We wouldn't take the tenant's word for it, that I'll give it to the landlord, right? We would pay that directly to the landlord to ensure that they're reimbursed for those expenses. Certainly that wouldn't cover all of their COVID-related expenses, but it would cover the past due rent amounts that their tenants would have onsite. I also wanted to let you know Career Force also operates our emergency assistance program, and I have met with them as well about how many, how much they would be able to allocate toward the rental assistance program. And Career Force was gonna reach out to Rick Fargo, who is a landlord in the community and also at least used to head up a landlord group. I'm not sure if he's the head of that anymore, but they were gonna reach out to him to talk about what that reimbursement would look like too. So we've been in communication with the landlord.
And I also think there's a grant that may be floating out there for rental assistance that our HRA may be interested in as well. And so avoiding the duplication
Right.
is, is gonna be really important here, so.
So, so just.
Ask the list, what else have you qualified for?
Yeah, and so just some food for thought, so Tyler, if, if there's 3,600 businesses and if we're gonna distribute 3 million dollars, that would be, and if we were gonna say, we're gonna give it to those 3,600 businesses, that's 833 dollars per business. So, don't know if that's gonna be too much, too big of a help if that's, if that's the way it goes.
An excellent point, and that's, that's where I, the, the beginning of the conversation indicated that 72% number. Because if you set the criteria based on how they're, how they were impacted by the executive orders, which is typical to what most of these grant programs have been made available, is, is that they're identifying the businesses that were shut down based on executive orders. So if you, that's where that 72% number comes in. Where they, yes, they were able to stay open, but. Where they, yes, they were able to stay open, but do we also make considerations for some of the expenses that they had to incur to stay open safely?
Yeah, and you know what? Here's, 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 I, I like stories and I like examples because when you tell a story, I think it just, it really makes a lot of sense. Okay, so here's, my barber is Wayne's Barber Shop over here in northeast Brainerd. And I, none of us could get a hair, Steve wanted a haircut, but he couldn't get a haircut. But I couldn't get a haircut either. So Wayne was closed for two months, but Wayne still had to pay his rent where he's renting there for two months. Yet he couldn't cut me hair. The salon owners or salon people couldn't do any perms or trims or anything else. They still had to pay rent. So I, I think they could use some assistance because I think it had a huge effect on them. So it's somehow we need to do what you said, Tyler, and we need to separate the, the businesses that were part of that 24% or 26% that were, that were actually shut down and they couldn't do anything at all. There was no revenue generating way for them to make any money, so. Nick, have you got something?
One thing to keep in mind with all this, no matter where that money ends up, at the end of the day, we have to have documentation that the money was used to either mitigate or deal with COVID-19. So when we go back to the rental assistance piece, if we give money to an individual to pay rent, we need to have documentation from them that they were behind on their rent, plus that they actually paid their rent. So we can give it directly to landlord or we can give it to the individual. Either way, we need documentation they were behind and that they actually made payment. On the private sector side, the guidance right now from the Treasury is that all funds must be used by the sub-recipient only to purchase or reimburse a purchase of goods or services that was needed during this timeframe. So that's where that whole revenue piece gets challenging. And when we talk about the small businesses or the, the hair cutting places, it gets challenging because now we have to look at what expenses did they incur that were a result of COVID-19? So it gets really tricky when we get to that.
Right, so, but that's a perfect example then. He, he was ordered no haircuts. And if he got caught giving somebody a haircut, he could lose his license. So he couldn't do, he had no way to generate any money, but yet he still had to pay his rent. So you mean, are you saying that that's not allowable? That, that's a direct result of the governor's orders because of COVID-19? So you're telling me that he, that's not an allowable expense? It sure does sound like it to me.
It sounds like it, it's a very gray area. That's the challenging part with all of this.
Sounds black and white to me.
So much gray area that when you look at guidance, guidance is so limited as far as this. Because this is a summation of what the Treasury guidance was. It's a page and a half, I narrowed it down to one page. This is everything they gave us for guidance. There's an FAQ that Treasury gave us that gives us a little more insight, but there's a lot of things that contradict one another. So what we're actually looking at is contracting with CLA, our audits, our audit team with a different division of CLA to actually review some of these things for us to ensure that they meet the guidance and that we'll get through an audit without any challenges.
And here's what I would suggest to you. If you can't reimburse a business for the revenue that they lost, and you can't reimburse them for an expense that they didn't have the revenue to pay, what's left? Nothing.
Doesn't make any sense.
Not what the guidance intended. And so we either get to focus on the revenue side or we get to focus on the expense side. There is no purpose in CARES Act funding being allocated if you can't do one of those. And so I'm okay with saying the revenue side, that's off limits. But the expense side, I think is on limits. And, and so to, to your point, the rent they had to pay, the utilities they had to pay.
Yes.
And if we put the grant limit at up to $10,000, it isn't going to get you a long ways in terms of the expenses that they incurred. They still had to pay that they didn't have revenue to support. If not the expense side and if not the revenue side, there's no purpose in the CARES Act.
And I know, I know a hairdresser that she was completely out of business. And if her husband wasn't working and she was a single lady, she'd have had no revenue. Wouldn't have been able to pay a house payment or a rent or anything else. Direct result of the governor's order saying that you can't run your business.
And if I understand this right, people who are self-employed can collect unemployment, so she didn't get her extra $600 a week either.
That's why it's also relevant to ask what other resources did they qualify for? Because I think that is relevant here if you're trying to target those who are in most need. And that's also why I think it's important that you have a fixed time period during which you're going to look at all the applications. Because what if the applications you get comes to $10 million?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm concerned about.
Right, and then you're going to have to pick and choose.
You get to 3 million, you go, oh, we're out of money.
I, I think it makes more sense for you to say that it's a one-month application period and you're going to look at every single application. And if you have to have additional criteria that you're going to choose to apply, that that makes more sense than just saying, we're going to take applications until we run out of money. Because then it's a bum's rush in to see who can get the application in the fastest.
Right.
And I don't know that I think that's going to target the relief to where it is most in need in the community. That's the trade-off. If you have the fixed budget, first come, first served, it's whoever's fastest. If you do the other way and you get twice as many applications as you have money, well, then you have the quandary of picking. It's a trade-off. Which one do you want to have? But you're going to have one or the other.
Or could you reduce it? Even though it's a qualifying expense, could you reduce it? You know, if I asked for 5,000 and there's 25 other applicants and we say, okay, we can't give out five, we have to give Steve 2,000.
It makes sense to say up to, because you have choices then. If you took all the applications in and it would get you to 4 million, well, then what you might decide is, we're going to award 8,500.
Yeah.
That makes sense. Or you could decide those who were self-employed and couldn't qualify for unemployment are going to be funded at the 10,000 level and the others are going to be funded at the 8,500 level. You have the ability to set those criteria after the fact. Someone will cry foul, no matter what you do here, someone's going to cry foul. And so, you know, what I always say is, okay, if, if you're going to make someone mad no matter what you do, it puts you in the position of doing what you think is the right thing to do. You're going to make someone mad no matter what you do, well, then go do what you think is the right thing to do. Try to target the need to those who are most in need. As difficult as that is, it's the harder path and I think it's the right path. This is a quandary I've never experienced in 26 years.
They've got the same thing out at the airport.
Gone down this path and I would suggest people who are just now entering the profession will never go down it again. Strange problem.
What else, what other questions or what other, what other things to flush things out for you?
I wanted to ask Tyler and/or Kim, what criteria have you seen in the applications that you would want to highlight to the board that you think have been good ideas? So that they can, we can at least get some feedback from them, yeah, we think so too, or no, we don't like that one. Tyler, you want to lead us off? You've seen 12 applications for other jurisdictions.
Yeah, the, the thing that is, seems to be, and, and seems to be very consistent with the, the applications that I've seen to this point. Is it, it's really eliminating professional services. In professional services, might meaning law firms, lending institutions, things like that, financial advisors. You know, that's, that seems to be very consistent across the board, partly because they were not ever ordered to shut down. And yes, there probably was slowdown, you know, a, a significant, there could be revenue loss with those just because people weren't, you know, seeking out those services as often. But I know that the, on the lending side of things, obviously with the PPP that went into effect, they were as busy as they've ever been. So, so that's one thing that is certainly seems to be very, very consistent across the board with all these applications is an ineligible sector of business is those that are deemed professional services. So I'd like some feedback, I think, on that. And then also, the other one, and I, is, you know, how do we handle potentially the agricultural side?
I think I agree that the, what you classify as professional services, like lawyers. And that, the list that you went down, I, I actually think those should be excluded.
Dentists.
Dentists, yeah. I don't know, realtors or?
Yeah, no, I, I.
I don't disagree with that. I'm, I'm kind of interested about the agricultural side, but explain that a little bit deeper to me.
Is a farm a business?
So technically, the, the, the agricultural, the production agricultural industry was not at any point shut down. Obviously, we're a little bit, you know, different here just because we're dealing with a, you know, some of this is seasonal. But the hard part about that is, is what was the, you know, certainly the impact on our, on our, our agricultural, our agricultural producers such as our, you know, our hog farmers, our beef farmers, things like that. And the only reason I bring this up, Commissioner Brecken, is because that is, I've seen that on, I think, eight of the 12 applications I've seen to this point is, is that they identify agricultural, production agriculture as an ineligible applicant. So I'm just curious as to some feedback from the commissioners on that, on that level. So that's the, that's one that's popped up that seems to be strange to me.
And the losses?
I'm wondering what, I, I do know that, that for, when the, well, for example, a hog farmer. You've got, you've got hogs in the pipeline. A sow has babies, babies grow up, the sow is bred, and it's, it's a constant cycle. And so from the time they're born till the time they go out the door, they have to have some place for those hogs to go and be processed. And when there was some COVID problems at some of the packing plants, there was no place for these hogs to go. And I know for a fact that, that, you know, somebody over in my neck of the woods was going over to, I think Browerville and picking up a semi-load and they were of like 220, 40-pound hogs and selling them for 90 bucks, which is cheap. And then they were taking them to the local meat markets and they were processing them because there was no place to go. So, and I heard that some were destroyed. I don't know if that's a fact, I heard that. So, so I think it did have an effect, but I don't know how, how do you, how do you figure out what those expenses were? I don't, I, I, I don't know, it's kind of, that's a, that's a quandary, Tyler, that's a good question.
Well, and as you get into more of these discussions, you know, you can certainly narrow it down to say that, you know, use the, you know, use the executive order listings from 20-04 and 20-08 to say if you don't fall within that bucket of a business that was shut down, that you're ineligible. But I, I don't know if that's, that, I don't know that that's the right path as we look at, as Administrator Huell mentioned, you know, expenses to revenue. I mean, the expenses, even if you weren't shut down, you had expenses related to being able, being able to open safely and, and provide the safety nets for your, for your employees. I mean, I, I can look at Christie at CTC and knowing the things that they had to do to make sure that their technicians were safe and going into people's homes was something they could safely do, you know, that's, that's impactful for a business like that. That's an expense that was not part of their budget line items, so that falls into that, that criteria. So those are other questions that, that are certainly going to pop up is, is that it would be deemed by the guidelines as necessary from an expense standpoint. So who gets excluded from that depending on, again, going back to the business sizes? So one of the things I will mention, what the state did with their last round of grants is, is that they put it into buckets based on size of the business. So they said, you know, as an example, if we had $3 million to use, there was, you know, $2 million that was set aside for businesses that are 50 employees or less. And then there was a million for those up to 250, and then there's another million for businesses over a certain size. I'm just throwing numbers out there. But that's the other side you could look at is saying, is there a need to put the primary, the majority of these funds into assisting businesses with tenant-less employees? Sure. But is there also a need for other businesses that have been affected on the expense side of this for the PPE equipment that is COVID-related to earmark some funds for those companies as well?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
The, the thought that's in my head right now is that maybe we should have or look at another special meeting so that we can have, Tim would have time to really kind of outline some of the criteria and work with, with the staff. I mean, we're talking some big dollars here. We're talking to making, be making a decision by next Tuesday, you know, with broadband. I'd feel more comfortable if we were able to get more information, be able to look at some of the applications, give us some time to digest and think this through. And, and maybe another special meeting to be able to discuss this, because again, there's a lot to get our hands around.
There is.
We, what do you think?
I'll make myself available for any of this.
What about, what about another, like another committee of the whole meeting on Monday of next week? Where we could have a, you know, we could have a two-hour discussion if that's what we needed. And if we had more thoughts from now until Monday, it could forward those on to you and, and then have a discussion on Monday and then, then hopefully we'll be ready to make a decision on, on Tuesday. What do you think of that?
I think that's a perfectly good idea.
All right, and that way we could have a list of the criteria for some of these categories by then too, if staff could do that.
Rosemary, what do you think?
I think that's what we should do.
If I could ask Tyler too, if you would provide a list of what type of businesses fall under that professional category? I want to make sure that, you know, that the hairdressers and the barbers don't fall under that category.
Happy to do so.
Tim, what would you, what would we do then? Would that be just classified as just kind of an emergency meeting or?
Special meeting. And I'm not even sure, we may be able to meet our publishing deadlines. Then it would just be a regular committee of the whole meeting, but it's either going to be a regular committee of the whole meeting or a special meeting.
For Monday, Monday, 9:00 AM here, okay.
And then in the meantime, you know, Tyler and Kim and Kara will continue to work on trying to put together an application based on what they've seen. And that's just a draft.
And maybe Tyler could be included and Christie could be included, maybe Christie hears something between now and then, some information that would, we might need to know? If that would, I don't know, Christie, if that works for you?
Yes, of course. And what I'll do is I'll true up a real firm proposal of what that looks like staying within the budgetary dollars that Administrator Huell has described. And so that we're only looking at what's available for expenditure.
Yeah. And maybe, you know, I mean, here's another thing too, is, you know, Chelsea's here, this gets a story in the paper. People have some ideas. I hope they call me, I hope they call Bill, I hope they call Rosemary and Steve. And then that might help, somebody might, a business might call and say, hey, uh, don't forget about this, you know, so I don't.
And your emails too.
Pardon me?
And your emails, which are, you know, easy to share.
Exactly. What else, Tim, to flush things out?
I think that's what we had for you is just to, you know, really start this conversation seriously. And I think we've made good progress today.
Kara, anything else further from you? Nick?
Steve?
I'm pretty quiet.
Okay, Rosemary? William?
I'm good, thank you.
Therese?
I just want to make sure you don't want to take any action on Monday and you'd rather have it as a special county board meeting.
rather have it as a special county board meeting?
No, no.
Instead of a committee of the whole?
Yeah, just, just a discussion, so no action on Monday, because being that we're having our committee, our, our county board meeting the next day, we can take action on that day.
And so you want it listed on that agenda as well?
Pardon me?
You want this on that agenda as well?
Yes. So if we make some decisions on Monday, and, but if Therese puts that on the agenda for, for our board meeting, we're covered.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, anything else?
Any comments from any of those?
Tyler, anything else?
Thank you guys for your time, we'll, we'll work on this and get this done, and give some guide, you know, some direction hopefully for you on Monday that we can vet this out. This isn't, this is a daunting task, but it's one that I've dealt with already and will continue to deal with moving forward, but excited to get this assistance out to the businesses that certainly have suffered in Crow Wing County.
So, so one final question, Tim, we, we were, we've gotten a couple of emails from on the Wise Road, so that's an unorganized territory. I don't suppose that we could use any of that money to fix that road COVID-related? Well, I'm trying to think outside the box!
That's a stretch!
That's kind of a stretch, I suppose.
I'll think about it, but it is a stretch.
That is a stretch. Well, hey, you know me, I've always got some big, crazy ideas.
We are being creative right now, because it is unique. We're in very strange times.
All right, well, I'm going to go get a haircut, so.
I'd like to say thank you to our guests for joining us too.
Yes.
Thank you for input.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, nothing else to come before the committee of the whole, we will be adjourned?